All right. So at 6:01, we're calling the meeting to order. Stephanie, can you take attendance? Brian Davis.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Dave Pembel.
Here.
Becky Bysel is walking right there. Stephanie Malm here and Kelsey Waits.
Here.
All right, first up is approving the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, an approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting and the November 10th special board meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. So I just want to take a moment to recognize our visitors either in person or watching online. Thank you for tuning in to the school board meeting tonight. Announcements and recognitions.
Yeah, so I'd like to bring up members of our high school marching band along with Ms. Chandler because the band had a very busy fall. And we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge that work and all of the performances that they did. So Ms. Chandler, I will turn it over to you.
There we go, awesome. So we had a blast this season. This is my 21st year directing the marching band and especially after... Okay. And coming off of last year where we had to practice in groups of nine to groups of 20, and we did not have a competitive season. We were rare to go and very excited. And I think the students were as well. Marching Man brings the competitive aspect to our band program, but it also brings the social part and the fun and being able to see other bands and compete. And this season, we had six shows, different Saturdays throughout the fall, and improved each one and ended up with a great third place finish at state in Class 2A, which is quite a large category, a large... Many competitors and many large and fantastic band programs. So we were really excited about that. Performing at US Bank Stadium is kind of a dream, walking on the turf and just giving the students an opportunity to do that. So we are very excited to come back into field shows and hoping next summer that we'll get back into our parade season since we did not have that this summer either, so.
I'm just going to say a couple of words about being an alumni, and I think that's really special for my role in the program. I've actually been teaching with the marching band for about 14 years now. And as I said, having gone to Hastings, I grew up in that culture of strong music programs and support for the arts. And I love to see that continue year after year after year. And now, my goal is to continue to provide our students with an excellent experience in District 200. So I appreciate all the support from all of you and everyone that supports the arts in Hastings. So I want to say thank you for sure. And as Ms. Chandler said, we did have a lot of fun this year getting back together and having a normal season. That was very special to our kids, and we were happy to be able to do that. And we're looking forward to our next season already. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for supporting the program, especially during COVID and everything. You know, it's been really hard to find a place where we can all feel accepted and we can be together. And this has been one of those places for a lot of people. So it's really made a really strong impact, so thank you.
I just wanted to talk about how Marching Man really gives everyone friendships and connections. It gives us leadership positions outside of Marching Man, like in school and out. And it's just really important, so thank you.
And I also just want to say thank you for the support because for me, I'm going to be going to the Minnesota State Mankato next year and also pursuing a degree in music as a general. And without the Marching Man program, I don't think I would have ever been able to pursue music as much as I wanted to now. So I want to say thank you for the support and everything.
We had 80 students participate in Marching Man this year. It is a co-curricular activity, so you have to be enrolled in one of the bands or orchestras to participate in Marching Man, and 80 is a large number. So whatever number we get, and we planned a show not knowing whether we would have 40 walk in the door or 80 coming off of COVID. So we were really pleased and had a blast. So thank you for everything that you've done and thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night. It was fun. I'm glad some of the students spoke up. Okay, so we'll move right along into items for discussion. So you will notice there are a lot of policies. Policy Committee was very busy this month. First up is Policy 103, Complaints for Students, Employees, Parents, and Other Persons. Now, I will explain, this is just a little bit different. And so sometimes I wish that the policy summaries came first so that the explanation was there. But what we've really done, you'll notice in some of the other policies that grievances and the grievance procedure was struck. And that was really in order to create this one policy that people could go to in order to figure out how to file complaints rather than having it kind of spread out all over the place. So that's what Policy 103 is. So are there any questions on that? Lisa?
I think this is just an edit question, and maybe you can tell me more about the discussion. In paragraph 2A, the final sentence reads, "However, persons are encouraged to file a complaint at the building level when appropriate." I would consider maybe striking when appropriate. I mean, you're encouraged to file it at the building level. I'm not sure, because we don't go into a whole bunch of when appropriate is. It just states that place of, you know, make your complaint at the level closest to the issue. And then I did a quick reading of this. I'm sorry to read it in detail. I see that... I would consider maybe an editorial read just to make sure we're using consistent language for the school district officials as you read throughout. Because we talk about supervisors, administrators, responsible administrator, and principal. So it might be exactly right, and I just couldn't concentrate to read through the whole thing. But maybe an editorial read for that I would encourage prior to the second reading. No substantive comments beyond that. Thank you.
My only... Go ahead, Becky.
I just have a question. Is that the designated person responsible for investigation, does that change? Or are we designating one person to be the investigator?
One person would be defined as the investigator depending upon what the situation is. So I think it's yes to both.
Scott?
I was just going to comment on the section 2A, that last sentence. The only reason I can think to keep the when appropriate is if the complaint were to be... If the person filing the complaint was not comfortable filing said complaint with their building level.
And in that case, I think maybe just striking when appropriate and clarifying that appropriate time would then be... So it would read, "However, persons are encouraged to file a complaint at the building level unless..." Unless...
Unless not appropriate.
Yeah, but what is appropriate? It's when they're not comfortable filing it at the building level. Then they should file it above. So we can work on that verbiage. Okay, any other comments or questions on this one? All right, then we will take that feedback back to policy. So now we'll move on to Policy 203.2, the order of the regular school board meeting. And so now what this has done is switched the order. And as you can see, Pledge of Allegiance has been added in. So we are one of only a few districts in the area that do not have Pledge of Allegiance. So any questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none, we will move this to a second reading as well. Policy 215, Addressing School Board Member Violations. And so this is the policy that was asked to be worked on last month. And that is that we didn't really have something... We've spent all this time working on the board handbook, but we didn't have something to actually hold board members accountable to the handbook we've been working so hard to get in place. So this is what the policy committee came up with. This has gone through legal to kind of figure out how to word this appropriately. So any questions, comments, or concerns about this policy?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we will move that on to a second reading. Next is Policy 401, Equal Employment Opportunity. And so now, this is where we've had some changes based on legal, including adding a couple additions. And then here's where we see the first instance of the grievance procedure being struck that I had mentioned with Policy 103. Any questions, comments, concerns about Policy 401? Lisa?
This is editorial. I'm just quick looking at the cross-references, and I don't see 103 listed as a cross-reference policy. And it's probably because they're both being... Oops, sorry. Both being developed at the same time. But would we reference that policy in there? Okay.
So just to clarify, we'll need to add that to 401, 402. I think it's just those two right now. Okay, any other discussion? All right, then we'll move this one on to a second reading as well. The next policy is 402, Disability Non-Discrimination. And here again is the change where we've struck the grievance and investigation procedure. Okay, this can go on to a second reading as well. Next up, Policy 412, Expense Reimbursement. So you'll notice that there are a couple changes here, specifically adding in about conferences in particular. And then later on, it had initially said that the rates for reimbursement were determined by the school board, but that's actually set by the IRS, not by the school board. So there are just a couple changes then, mixed in there. Any questions on this one?
Section 3C, Conference Request and Expense Reimbursement Forms. What is a conference request?
So if someone is going to a conference, so the request for the reimbursement of the expenses associated with the conference.
So what would be an example of a conference? I don't understand.
So if a teacher went to, or an administrator, or anyone went to... Well, band. So there's a large music conference every year up north. So to go to that, they'd fill out the forms to get it approved.
Gotcha, okay.
Turn in the appropriate forms for receipts.
Thank you.
Lisa?
Thank you. When I look back at our existing 412, that's currently linked to the district website, there's a couple different things, like the title is changed, but I don't see it annotated on this copy. So I'm not sure if the link is off on the website or if it's maybe every annotation didn't get highlighted. Because my basic question originally was, is this 412... I'm going to make eye contact with Jen. Intended to just completely replace the existing 412? Which is really... It's called Travel and Related Expenses? Okay. Thank you. I can't read and look at her, so I appreciate Dave helping me out reading the body language part. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Or feedback? Okay. Then we'll just keep chugging along and move on to Policy 412.1, Administrative Procedures. So this is what the 412 you're mentioning on the district website, the travel and related expenses. And so that's here. So it's now... So there's a couple that we had caught, just the number needed to be changed, but...
So there'll be a 412, which is the overarching expenses, and then there'd be a 412.1, which is specific to the... Or outlines the procedures.
Correct.
That end say... Okay, thank you.
So as we do these now, and we have the dot-one procedure thing. So the board approves the policy. The procedure is the accompaniment to the policy. So if there comes a time with an administrative procedure where it's... For example, that's why we moved to like the IRS account. So if we have to change something in the procedure, we can do that without having to have the board go all the way through the policy again. But that's why it's called out as an administrative procedure. So there's a differentiation in there.
Scott? Oh, Scott?
Just Section 4, Expense Reimbursement. Letter C is indented, and it should be out-dented to line up with the A and B. So just a little administrivia cleanup.
And Becky?
Section 5 talks about the P card. Just want to make sure that all staff and new staff and new coaches and everything have had the proper training on that so we don't have any mishaps. So are we giving formal training on that just because it's in this policy? And so everybody knows how to use it?
Yeah, everybody that gets approved for a P card also has to go through training for it and gets a bunch of documents now that lays out here are the uses. Here's the procedure you have to go through to use it. Here's who is responsible for... If you're the supervisor, there's a bunch of mechanisms in place, not only for the training, but to follow up when staff are using it and after the fact.
So it's in-person training and the packet or just the packet?
It's the packet, and there is a... Is it the video training piece? I can't remember which one it was. Yeah, there's a Safe Schools Training. It's under our Safe Schools thing, but there's another module they're called. And that one's the video one then. Jen's nodding.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, then we'll move that one on to a second reading as well. So we have Policy 601, the Curriculum Advisory Committee Purpose, Role, and Membership. And then if you're in Board Book, you'll also see the application for the Curriculum Advisory Council.
So I need to clarify on that one. That one got misnumbered. So 601, Policy 601 is not leaving our policies. This actually should be in there as 601.1 because if you'll notice, this policy is strictly about Curriculum Advisory Committee. It's not the curriculum policy. So just to make that note, we're not replacing 601. We're adding to 601, more clarity.
Thank you. So does that mean in 601 that we have to add 601.1? Should this be approved? It gets added as a cross-reference?
Yeah, it will read... It'll in 601...
And I presume those can just get added as...
Yeah, they'll get added. As Rachel and I were going through them, they'll get added. It'll impact 603, 601. Those will be cross-referenced to 601.1 because those two policies have to do with this Curriculum Advisory Committee.
Section 3, Selection of CAC Members. You have letters A and B are duplicates of each other.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, then we will move that into a second read. All right, Policy 606A, Textbooks and Instructional Materials, Responsibility of Selection. So you'll see that we did not have a formal procedure and policy kind of set in place here for how materials are selected. And so that's what this is getting at. Lisa?
Superintendent McDowell, could you explain to me how an A, a policy with an A, is like or dislike a .1 or a .something? How does this relate to existing 606?
We could do it either way. I would imagine if you wanted to have a .1 or an A, I think the reason we did 606A, 606B was because there... It was just to differentiate between the selection. And then you'll see 606B is the reconsideration. So it was just denoting they're related specifically to 606, but they're two different things. We could definitely go .1, .2.
I would prefer to pick one or the other. Either we let her or we number them.
That's fine.
.1, .2. I don't know how I've managed to form that opinion in no time at all, but I did.
That's fair. All right, so we'll swap that over, then it sounds like the .1s. All right, any other comments on this one? All right, that will move on for a second reading as well. Next up is 606B, which will then become 606.2, Textbooks and Instructional Materials, Reconsideration of Textbooks or Other Instructional Materials. And so what this is doing is setting up the process should someone have like a complaint about a resource that's being used that would need to be addressed. And this is kind of the procedure that would then be followed. Superintendent McDowell?
After reviewing this, we realized that we, for 606B, in the section that has the people listed as the committee, we want to add a library media specialist called out in there.
Scott?
For the Committee for Reconsideration of Resource, how are the committee... There are some committee members that are called out, how they're selected. How are the ones that, like for instance, one building principal, one teacher who teaches at the level the concern was raised, one member of the Curriculum Advisory Committee, two teachers from the site where the objection was raised, serve on the site leadership team, and one ISD parent selected by... Can we just talk about how those are selected?
Yeah, Rachel Larson's on her way up.
Good evening. That is a great question. Sometimes the committee representation depends upon the situation. So the principal may be dependent upon the site, right? So if it's a McCullough parent that raises the concern or a McCullough staff member, then we want a McCullough principal. So that would rotate. Same with teachers, the teachers who teach at the level, it may depend on who's available, who has time to read the resource, because if it is an extensive resource, there's quite a commitment of outside time to go through this process and procedure. So it would be those that serve on building leadership team, and also curriculum review teams, so people who understand the overall process of how we go about selecting materials, and have an extensive background in teaching that content. So the expertise and the skill set and the licensure would depend upon the situation and the resource that's being challenged.
What about the, say, the member from the curriculum advisory committee, since that does have a substantial number of individuals on it?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Typically, what we would do is, we would ask for one representative of that committee to be willing to serve in that capacity. Again, depending upon availability and the timing, that may rotate, but usually one person that is a member of that committee can serve on, as a designee. So that would be selected by the committee.
Scott?
And then the parent selected by administration, how does that happen?
Typically, in my experience, parents who are selected have been active members in the PTA, so that they have an understanding of what's happening in the schools, because PTAs often foster resources for purchases of materials, and so typically, that's the go-to. And it's usually a, multiple people sometimes are asked, so it's not necessarily a individual person that's always asked, but it could be the chair of the PTA that you start with, or a parent who's expressed interest, and they have a background.
And then the outcome of this is a recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
And that recommendation is a recommendation to who?
To myself, and then also Superintendent McDowell, and then if need be, it would come to the board.
Okay. And then that decision is final?
Yes.
If it?
Yes.
At whichever level?
Yes, yep. Typically, it is, in my experience, it is solved at my position. So it rarely goes to a Board of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, especially since we have Rachel right there? All right, it doesn't look like it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, then we will move that one to a second reading as well. And last up is policy 499, the COVID-19 vaccination emergency temporary standard, and for some reason, this is not popping up in my board book, but it says it's attached. Okay. Okay, magical. All right. Did you want to talk about this one?
So 499 is related to the OSHA requirements that are anticipated to come through, and so our legal, who provides legal to many districts, has gotten a policy, essentially becomes a temporary policy that's only in effect if OSHA and ETS goes into effect. So it's, that's why it's written that way. But it is something that's going to have to be in place, and will be a requirement from the federal government if ETS does go into effect. And because we're a school district and have over 100 employees, we will be bound by it and not have a choice in the matter. So the recommendation has been given to districts to start having all your ducks in a row before we hit the end of the year, if not the beginning of January. And so this is a first reading on this one, so that we can just keep that ball moving at any point in time, if, much like that stay that's in place right now, if something changes, then it, then it goes away effectively. But the way that legal has the policy written, it would only be in effect when the ETS is in effect.
Yeah, if you look at section three under scope, part A specifies only in effect if legally required. And so this does specify that this will only be in place if the federal government requirement goes through. Any questions on this one? Okay. All right, we've made it through the first readings. On to the second readings. First is policy 204, school board meeting minutes. So this is the, we had spoken about this one last month, where there's the addition of the journal. And this is getting ahead of statute, before statute changes and takes effect. So any questions on this, the second round through? Otherwise, we can move this to an action item tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to move this to an action item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? All right, motion carries. We will see this later. Policy 503, student attendance, is also up for a second reading, and this is the, where we specified some of the exceptions to being able to participate in the extracurricular activities. Man, I needed more caffeine this afternoon. Any questions on this a second time through? All right. Do we have a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Next up, policy 710A, athletic transportation policy. And so you will see, last month, we spent a bunch of time trying to figure out, there were a couple words in there referencing C below, but we had gotten rid of that, so now the C below is being removed, so. Any questions or discussion on this?
So I'm just gonna do a soapbox moment. It's not specific to any change in this policy, I think this, this is clear. This is just speaking as a parent who experienced kids participating in events that the district did not provide transportation to, and, and being caught unawares, like, how students and how, how students solve that problem. I, I just hadn't put the whole thing through, so I just would like to encourage probably conversations at the, at parent meetings and/or through the admin, the athletic office that just says, just, just know that this is a problem your child will be asked to solve. High school kids are perfectly capable of solving it, that's not my concern, I just was, I was back-footed a little bit the first time it happened to me, to our family. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the way the policy reads now, so thank you. Stepping off my box.
But I'm thinking we bring this forward as 710.1?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those, any discussion on the motion to move? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. All right, we have made it through the copious amount of policies. Thank you. Now we are into the audit report.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. We're pleased to be presenting the culmination of the audit and do the audit presentation, which is kind of my favorite part of the whole process, and signifying the completion of that audit process for this past year ended June 30th, 2021. So we always want to thank your staff for the assistance they provided in pulling information, and it is a long process that has gone through, and I know it's been a challenging year, and add the audit process in with that as well is always challenging. So tonight, we have a PowerPoint presentation. I should start off with mentioning, my name is Aaron Nielsen with the independent accounting firm of MMKR. So you've got three documents before you saw on the, on the board report, with the financial statement document, the management report, and then the corrective action plan or CAF. So with that, I'll use my PowerPoint presentation, we simply pulled some information from the management report, so I'm not trying to spring anything on the board with our presentation tonight. So with that, we share with you our role as independent auditors to provide the opinion on the financial statements for the district audit, as well as the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. You receive well in excess of the threshold of $750,000, that requires the extra testing. We also have our internal controls and compliance reports that are required under the financial statement audit, as well as the single audit, and the Office of the State Auditor state laws and regulations. So with that, I'll get right to our results with just a couple of slides, and I'll move quickly through them, because we're pleased with the reports for your district this year. With regard to our district financial audit, we've issued what is known as an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements, so, meaning that the document before you is fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for the financial position as of June 30th, 2021, and for the year then ended. With regard to the internal control and compliance for the financial statement audit, and I'll move right to the Minnesota legal compliance and the single audit of federal awards, I'm grouping them unable to, because we're pleased to report we did not have any material weaknesses to report for your district, and no instances of non-compliance that would be required to be shared with you this evening. So the corrective action plan that was mentioned as one of the documents, I almost skipped right over it, because it really says nothing on, on there without any findings for your district this past year. With that, the next several slides are showing some information right out of your financial statement that we've accumulated over the years, from the various financial statements that they apply. I'll, I'll move through the information pretty quickly, and feel free to stop me, but I'll save some time for questions at the end. We've got your adjusted ADM, or that adjusted average daily membership and the resulting pupil units. As I'm sure you're aware, the past year that we were presenting on saw a decrease in the adjusted average daily membership to 4,186 students for 2021, which was a decrease of about 3% compared to the previous year. When we move on to the next slide, we're looking at the general fund financial position for the past 10 years, just grabbing a few key components with regard to the expenditures for the size of the operation for the organization, and as well as the unrestricted fund balance and cash balances for each of the past 10 years at that point in time of June 30th. My next slide, we look at the general fund financial position, just diving a little deeper into the fund balance components of the general fund. So looking at the breakdown of fund balance between non-spendable, which would be prepaid and inventory dollars that are sitting available for the district's use, restricted fund balance, then the remaining categories are all under unrestricted, so committed dollars assigned, and then unassigned fund balances. So when you look at the percentages, you can see there was just a slight increase as a percentage for the unassigned, as well as that unrestricted, compared to the prior year, both close to about a 1%, one slightly over, one slightly under a 1% increase. When you look at the components, the largest change was in the restricted category, and looking a little deeper in the financial statements, you'd see the largely in restricted for long-term facilities maintenance, and I'm sure impacted by delays and ability to spend some of those resources as well. I've got a couple more slides for the general fund, so it is the primary operating fund for the school district, so we spend most of our time with the presentation looking at those slides. The general fund revenues for this past year totaled $57.5 million for the size of the organization, coming in very close to budget with, within 1%, just slightly under eight tenths of 1% under budget, and probably the largest variance was within that other category that you see with lost fees, with a, lack of ability to be able to provide some of those coursework, where you're charging fees for that, as well as investment earnings that suffered this past year from all the organizations that we worked with. Another comment that I like to share is just recognizing where the revenues for your general fund come from. As you can see, they're heavily concentrated in state sources, accounting for approximately 70% of your general fund dollars this past year, followed by property taxes at 22%. And then just rounding off, I don't think I included when the management report, federal sources made up 5% this past year, and then followed by all other, the fees, and then investment earnings at 3% for 2021, so showing that change. Looking at the expenditures, I have a similar graph where we look at budget to actual to prior year, like we did with the general fund revenues. A little different presentation than we have in the financial statements, where we focus on programs, elementary, secondary education, special education, administrative, instructional support services. With this graph, we look at the components of the spending with regard to salaries, benefits, purchase services. So this past year, total expenditures for the general fund amounted to $54.7 million, coming in under budget by about 5.7%, and they were, as anticipated, increasing over the prior year with the budget, with an increase of about 2.4% over the prior year. And as I previously mentioned, obviously impacted by the conservative budgeting and then spending delays that would happen this past year with regard to the ongoing pandemic. My next slide, I cover a couple of the other operating funds with regard to the food service special revenue fund and the community service special revenue fund, and I realize these funds have also been impacted significantly in how they're operating and delivering services. So you can see each one of these individual funds experienced a decrease in their year-end financial position, that fund balance, but as anticipated with the adopt, or final adopted budgets that were approved, so seeing those decreases occur. The food service special revenue fund ended with a fund balance of 26.4% of total expenditures this past year, while the community service fund ended with a fund balance of 19% of their annual expenditures. And then just a couple more slides, we've got the internal service fund, a slide showing the past three years of operations. So the internal service fund is utilized by the district for their self-insured operations for health benefits, as well as dental benefits. So you can see the positive operating results each of the past three years with improvements in that net position, which is nice to see, and I'm sure you're pleased to see that, and important to be able to weather some storms if you have impacts with the changes in the claims that can occur in one year. And we are seeing some kind of awkward trends, just because of the ability for people to go out and get their services. So it's nice when you have some fund balance or net position, in this case, to be able to weather that and not have to react immediately, or as significantly for rate changes from year to year. And then to this point, we've been talking about the individual funds, so governmental funds, for instance, we don't include capital assets or the long-term obligations in that financial presentation. So you've got the dual perspective where we capture all of that with the entity-wide financial statements, so we consolidate all of the individual funds, the general fund and capital project funds, for instance, and, and all the governmental funds include the internal service funds, and then we also capture the long-term perspective with capital assets and then long-term obligations. So this slide shows you that long-term perspective, and you can see here at the, at this point in the presentation, the district overall is on an increase of about $1.4 million. We've, we've split that on the lower half of the, let me start with the top half of the graph, we showed that presentation looking at the individual governmental funds, and how you get to that net position on an entity-wide. So as I mentioned, adding capital assets and the long-term obligations. So the net pension obligations had an impact on the entity-wide financial statements. The lower half, we break it down, then that net position by the components of net investment and capital assets. So we take your capital assets and offset them by their related obligations, those bonds payable, used to finance them. Restricted would capture many of the similar things we talked about in the general fund, long-term facilities, capital, operating capital restrictions at the state level, and then everything else falls into that unrestricted. So as you can see, you've got a deficit in that unrestricted, and we've talked about that in the past, I don't think it's anything you need to be panicked about, it's incorporating your proportionate share of those net pension obligations. So when we look overall, you're seeing an increase largely in that restricted component, and a couple of areas there is that capital asset acquisition, as I mentioned before, the long-term facilities, maintenance dollars being held there, and then the district also setting dollars aside for future bond payments with the specific, I think, the QSCAP bonds, where you're financing payments to that that are restricted, and then they'll pay the bonds all. and then they'll pay the bonds all off at one time at the end. So with that, I know I went through a lot of information. If there's any questions on either of the documents,[609.41]
Added in this year for ESSER. And so, to make sure we're keeping everything separate, we want to keep the ESSER stuff off on its own, which is why you'll see in the next column over, that's the FTE reduction that we'd be looking at. And those are the numbers that we have shown on the previous slides. So in actuality, you'd have a theoretical four, but the, in elementary, but the one would be added back in because we still have ESSER dollars for next year. So we're assuming we're going to probably add that back in. But again, ESSER has to live in its own bucket. So it really can't be included when we're talking right sizing adjustments. Those numbers can't be included in there. As far as the secondary programming adjustments, so again, at the work session, we talked about 250,000 being a goal. And so here's where we are in this conversation. We are looking really hard at middle school and high school, trying to find staffing efficiencies that are both in and out of the classroom. This simply means we're looking at how many kids are in a class? How many kids are in a section? How many, how many kids have been in a section, for example, at the high school over the last three, four, or five years? And do we have anything where we can create some efficiencies by not offering that class for a year or something like that? That's that low registration class size. We're looking at scheduling options. Can we do some things differently that will both free up scheduling conflicts? So sometimes just the fact that we have locked kids into a certain path will create low classes and high classes. And there's some scheduling options. We can create some effectiveness and some efficiency there that might ultimately lead us to saving some dollars in FTE. And then finally, we're looking at those middle school athletics and activities for revenue options. So I did want to make sure that I include this slide out there as well. So one of the things that is not a reduction piece, but the board has asked, and we talked again about what a technology sustainability plan would be. And so I put this back up here again, that the extreme for a technology sustainability plan, if you're assuming like a five-year cycle, is just, just over 650,000, so $664,000 a year to do everything. We currently have a assigned balance, technology balance. This is that $100,000 a year that goes in to a signed account out of the general fund. And that's currently at 934,543. And our current annual amount, which we deferred last year, is 100,000. And the recommendation or the conversation that happened was maybe we should consider upping this to 400,000 so that we can take off a big chunk of that sustainability plan over the next several years in those devices. So here's our timeline. As far as, I think we need to be this week of the 15th and 19th, we were meeting with building administration based on our conversations, really telling them, we need you to look at this, we need you to dig into it, what can you come up with? Rachel Larson and myself have then this week, mostly Rachel, working with administration to start detailing out what is it that we can actually do in our scheduling and our staffing and pieces like that. We're assuming that next week, before we get to the work session on the first, we will have the next layer of detail. So the board asked at our last conversation, we really want to see, if this is what you're thinking of doing, what's the impact? If this is what you're thinking of doing, here's the impact. So our plan is by the first, so next week, is to have that level of detail as best as we can for the discussion by those line item options. We're thinking at the board meeting on the eighth, we might be to a spot to finalize some decisions. If we're not, I'm going to recommend that we hold the 15th as an optional additional meeting so that we can have this, have our main decisions done by the 15th. Remember, the reason for this is as we move into winter break, that's also the time we start putting registration guides together. And so we really need to have some solid or the big decisions made for the middle school and the high school so they can get going on those registration guides. Questions?
I just want to say thank you for all your work on this, to the whole team. And I know that's a district-wide effort.
It definitely is a big team effort. It pulls everybody in from finance, HR, special ed, teaching and learning, all the principals. And we've hit that spot where it's hard to have conversations without people thinking what they think. And so just, I want you to also be aware of that, that as we get into these details, we're at that spot again where someone could make an assumption, even though we haven't decided anything, or you as a board haven't decided anything. And so you could start hearing stuff because this is that kind of yucky time of the conversation.
Any other questions or comments? I had seen some shaking heads a second ago, but just confirming. All right. Then we'll move into administrative reports.
Back up again. So I did want to take some time. We had talked in our, in our work session discussions, when we're talking about strategic planning, we had mentioned that as far as the timeline on reports, that the November meeting, we wanted to start the process of, that's when I would use my update to give kind of an update of where we are with strategic planning. So that's what I was going to talk about tonight as far as the update was specific to strategic planning. Hopefully we'll catch some people up who haven't been in the process detailed. And other people, it'll just be a reminder of what we've been doing. So first of all, this can be found on our website, but this is our strategic plan. It includes our mission, our vision. We've got seven core values, and it's inclusive of the strategic anchors that all came out of our desired daily experiences for our students, families, and staff. And everybody remembers, we spent a lot of time last year going out to students, families, and staff, everything from doing a story wall to surveys, and really trying to understand what are the daily experiences that these folks would like to have as a member of ISD-200. So how does it all fit together? Well, that strategic plan really drives an operational plan, and I'm going to get into that in a second. But the operational plan really is fed and feeds, so it's kind of a back and forth. These executive summaries, executive summaries are put together by all of the directors. So each one of the directors gives to me every year two executive summaries, and I'll get into the specifics of what those are on the next slide. Every elementary school has an action card for every item they're working on. Every middle, or the middle school has an action card for every item they're working on as it relates to that operational plan. And the high school has action cards for what they're working on as it relates to the operational plan, really to get at what that strategic plan wants us to be. And then this drives the district vision card, which as you know, we talked about, that's one of the things we're working on this year is really to further define what that vision card looks like and what we're going to be using for metrics. So here are those internal components. So for, for example, the operational plan, while it is a very large document, it is made up of three strategic anchors. So when I'm working with the principals and with the district directors, we have a one-pager operational plan that details out what are we looking at under engaged learners? What are we getting at under effective operations? What are we getting at in communication and collaboration? And so it's really starting to operationalize that for those administrators so that the administrators, whether it's through their executive summaries, which details out not only what have they done the last 12 months, but each one of them details out what are they going to be doing in the next 90 days on that operational plan? And what are they going to, what do they vision out 12 to 15 months as far as the department? So there's one for finances, one for HR, one for teaching and learning, one for building and grounds, one for special education, communications, community ed. Every one of those directors has one of these, which further operationalizes those three areas so that we know on a timeline what's happening. At the building levels, those building principals are working with their teachers to come up with their action cards. So you see there, the elementary action card, if you walked into that elementary, you should be able to, with very, I would, I would say, talking to most people in that building, everyone should know that at the elementary level, they're really working on two things, literacy, and they're working on social emotional learning. And so they have an action card that they've developed at the elementary level. That's the perfect example to see how all of this connects because we know that a strategic anchor is engaged learners. At that elementary school, that's how they're getting at engaged learners, is the social emotional learning and how they're going about implementing the literacy curriculum right now. Middle school, they've got three that they're working on right now. They're really trying to get a handle on what is the data they want to be using for those middle school students to make decisions? They're working on student engagement, and they're really working on how are they integrating professional development in their staff meetings, in their PLCs? What does that look like? What's that sound like? What's that feel like? And then at the high school, you can see that they are really focused on how are they increasing relationships with adults? How are they strengthening that? And then they have a huge focus on that ninth grade success program that they're putting together this year. So this is what it looks like in action and what the documents behind the scenes are put together so that we can follow. Rachel Larson can follow. If special education, Megan Miller can follow. If those buildings, if anything relates specifically to their areas, we should see that, not only in the action card, we should see that in a executive summary. We should see the link to the operational plan, and we should be able to point out where does that live inside of that strategic plan that we have. The part that we are still working through piece by piece, and we are almost there, is the district vision card. So if you remember, this is that card where by the end of the year, what we are hoping to have is that yellow center line, being able to define what exactly are the specific metrics that are going to give us the baseline for each one of these areas. So on the left-hand side, you'll see our three from that triangle, desired daily experiences, where we've got areas focused on how are we doing and how are we being successful with students? How are we being successful with staff? How are we being successful with families? In that second column, those are the main areas that we're looking at, that we're choosing right now, that that's how we're going to define that. And what we've been able to now in the first quarter of the year is articulate what we believe the metrics are that we can use and be able to sustain over time. Because one of the things that we find is that's great to choose this metric, but are we sure that's going to be around in three years in the same way? So you can compare and get that trend line on the far end. So the hope is that by the next time that I talk with you, we will have that metric column further delineated so that we can really dig into, all right, is it MCA, for example, and I'll just throw this out there, that top one, percentage of students K-12 on track to graduate? Well, what exactly are we going to pull at the elementary, middle school level to make sure that that's what we want to project that on track for graduation? What does that look like? And so that'll be the next, the next time I give this update, that's what I'm hoping we'll be spending time with. And then as a reminder to everyone, here's really where, so everything up to this point has all been management, right? It's all been the details, the processes, everything that happens. Well, it's all then goes back to the school boards, your three-year governance work plan that you have. And you will see on that left-hand column there, the second to the left column, in fiscal '21, '22, you can look at any one of those bullet points, and they're either completed at this point, or they're in process, or they're way, they're on that list to start in the second half of the school year. So for example, the long-range plan, well, that we bumped out to happen after January of the school year. And so for you as a board, to understand that this document becomes a very important document because it drives what we are either keeping, changing, or modifying with all of the other stuff on the slides that I talked about to this point. Questions?
I'm not seeing any. But Brian, you have an interesting look on your face.
I can see that's my face.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay.
Then that seems good. Thank you very much for the update. All right, building construction fund project update. You got to say, it feels good that this is, we're getting close here.
It is getting close. So we had one more project move into that top category is being closed out. That was the district-wide camera project. That did add a little bit of additional remaining funds to that. So now we're sitting at about $100,000 in that top category because we also distributed the money for the four projects that were approved at the October board meeting. So that was the middle school track, the high school lecture hall, the high school baseball drainage, the ALC, and that's actually five, and the high school team locker room privacy improvements. So the money has all been now moved and allocated to those new projects.
All right. Any other questions for Jen?
Good news.
All right, thank you very much. Then we will jump right into student enrollment.
So we had a slight decrease from October, about three students. So for the most part, enrollments remaining stable.
All right, thank you. Fundraising report.
So the fundraising report is something that the board has typically asked, that is reported on throughout the school year. And so I don't know if there are any questions for the board. I will zoom this one in for the audience, but it's going to be really hard to see because it's a spreadsheet there. But as an example, and for those people that can't see, these reports come to the school board, and these are a list of all of the fundraisers that have taken place to this point in time at the different schools and what the dollar amounts that those fundraisers have brought in for the different areas or different groups.
Lisa?
Yeah.
I just want to point out, and then, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is fundraisers that are undertaken by district clubs or district athletic teams or district programs. There are, as we all know, many a car wash and many a fundraiser happening by community booster clubs that don't get reported to us, but that we may see the benefit of when we get a donations report.
That's correct.
So that's the two places, that's sort of the differentiation between what we see in a fundraising report and what we might see in a donations report, but it might look like fundraising to the community.
Correct. And that's why you'll see, the community would see if they pulled this up on their computer, detailed out on the left column what the fundraiser description is. So typically, it starts with choir, it starts with band, it starts with who is the district club and/or organization that's putting the fundraiser on. But that's a great point.
Scott?
Just to further clarify, there's things not on here too, that I think people can, can misconstrue as fundraisers, like the recent NHS gathering of food for the food shelf, food and, and money for the, for the food shelf. That is not a fundraiser for NHS or for the school. All of that money is for the food bank, so.
And my guess is that's the reason why the board wanted these reports to be brought and publicly noted, is so that there is clarity with all of that.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Then we will move into the policy committee minutes, which, as I said before, I mean, this has already, this has already all been discussed in the policies that were noted previously. But here is basically the summary I said with each individual one for easy access later, should you be curious.
I do want to point out, I do like it when I'm meeting prep. Before I read all of the first readings and get ready, I go, I jump ahead in the agenda and I read the policy report. So I do think it's valuable because it sets the context for me to go back and read all the individual policies. So thank you for having it in there, even though it doesn't flow necessarily in the meeting.
That's, that's fair. Thank you for, for saying that. So we are meeting next week since our board meeting in December is so early, and we anticipated there would be feedback from tonight. So policy committee is pulling another meeting together next week to make sure that we can get those changes to the policies from the feedback in place before the meeting, December 8th.
You guys are making all the other committees look pretty sad.
You've got two people who do graduate work in public policy stuff, so we kind of get a little nerdy about it all, so.
We had so much fun.
It's so much fun. All right. So then with, well, you know what, are there any questions about the committee minutes?
No.
Okay. So we'll move into action items. So first up is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? And again, for community members, this is all available on Board Book if you want to see the specifics of the consent agenda. All right. So with that, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Items for individual action. First up is the combined polling places resolution. And just as clarification, this is something we do every year, and it's in case for some reason there is a special election next year, we have already taken the initiative to have combined polling places.
And I would just add, I know in the past, we've, board's had conversations about whether or whether or not. I can tell you, after watching Becky run this last election, I don't know how we would have done it if we didn't have combined polling places. It is a ton of work, even with combined polling places, to pull it off with the limited staff that we have because we aren't in a place where the county takes over or anything like that. Anything that is an off-year, we have to run it ourselves and responsible for everything from the planning, communication, tabulation, our tabulators, all that stuff. So I'd highly recommend that we combine polling places.
All right. Any discussion? Stephanie?
So I, Stephanie Mollum, introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption, the Hastings ISD-200 combined polling place resolution, a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of the statewide, of a statewide election. Can I get a second, please?
So moved.
Dave Pimble seconded, seconded the motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution. We will do a roll call vote. First up, Becky Bysel.
Yes.
Brian Davis.
Yes.
Lisa Hedin.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Stephanie Mollum, yes. Dave Pimble.
Yes.
Kelsey Waiz.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm getting there. Whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. Next up, another resolution for the election certification.
This is another resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, Stephanie Mollum, introduce the following resolution and move for the adoption of the resolution authorizing issuance of certificate, certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other election duties. So this is the, so just for clarification, this is all, I don't read them verbatim because they are extremely lengthy. They are on the, on Board Book, and they will be published as well for everybody to see. Can I get a second, please? Scott Gergen seconded the motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution. Again, we will do a roll call vote. Shake things up. Dave Pimble.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Hedin.
Yes.
Brian Davis.
Yes.
Becky Bysel.
Yes.
Stephanie Mollum, yes. Kelsey Waiz.
Yes.
Whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is a motion to accept the audit report. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just like to thank Jen Subert and her team for all the time and effort that I know that goes into this. This is something that we have seen year after year after year, just excellent, perfect results on our audit. And every year, we are so unbelievably close with our budgeting that it is really a point of pride for the district. So thank you so much because without you, it wouldn't happen.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of accepting the audit report say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is what we discussed earlier with the ALC lease cancellation. Do we have a motion to cancel the lease?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. The school board handbook, this is being brought forward just for final approval by the board. So all those in favor, or sorry, is there a motion to approve the handbook? I caught it.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I, Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to clarify that, because we're concurrently working on policy 215, that, although we're approving the handbook today, and we reference a number of policies, if and when 215 is approved upon a second reading and, and action, that it would be incorporated? Is that what everybody would anticipate?
Correct. And so we discussed this, you mean, add it to the handbook, I assume you mean? One of the questions we discussed at policy committee is if policy 215 gets approved if and when, that the board handbook becomes policy because we are voting on it. So the handbook itself is policy as well, as far as the board accountability is concerned.
I appreciate that. What I, what I'm really anticipate liking, already like and anticipate liking more about the handbook, is it's a handbook that has it all in one place. I'm not going on the website to read other board policies. And I like that we've incorporated, like 201 is in there and a couple of other things that are just reiterated. So I'm super comfortable approving it right now. I think we learned a big lesson after our previous election when we had three board members come in, we were really able to highlight this gap. But if and when other policies that apply directly to the board are passed, I would like to see them incorporated, again, just for clarity of being available in one place.
Could that be tied to addendum?
I don't know. I don't know what procedurally the right thing is.
That's what I, I was going to say, I think that that maybe could tie to an addendum. That way, the addendum could be updated and you could, you'd have the handbook and then the addendum to that.
Superintendent McDowell, how do you see that being incorporated?
Well, as I'm thinking about it, it's 215 now. It could be policy 225, whatever that is later, right? So I think maybe we could put something in there. There's that section that the board asked for where we have listed all of the board policies, so it's hyperlinked to all of them for ease of board members. We probably could put some verbiage in there that just leads to, you know, I don't know, I hate that. From my, in my mind, the board's approving a handbook is what they're approving. The handbook, the way that it's written, is really just something that's encapsulating everything in one spot. My assumption would be is if there were other board policies that came up specifically to the board, meaning the 200s in particular, those would simply be added if they came to be to that.
the 200s in particular, those would simply be added if they came to be to that reference section. The only other thing that I could see you doing, because in, with regard to a majority of the other 200 policies, or even the 100 policies right now, there are sections in that handbook that, there's a paragraph that speaks to that topic, and then references that policy. I suppose another way to do it, you could approve the handbook with that, the assumption that if and when policy 215, if that's the one for tonight, that we would put a, we would put a paragraph in there on board accountability, or whatever you would want to title it, simply because of the timing thing.
Well, I think your point is really valid, that this is, for the purpose of conversation today, it's policy 215. But we may find another board policy, or there may be an amendment to a board policy that's currently in the handbook. The handbook is a combination of policies that have been approved by the board, and it's there for ease of access. So I would feel comfortable, one, I feel like we're establishing, by voting for this, we're establishing the existence of a handbook.
Correct.
That's available to board members, and then that needs to be kept current, based on policies that are approved by the board. I mean, we're not going to add random things that just one person wants. We're going to put board-approved policies or guidelines.
Yeah, because the, the board handbook, approving the board handbook wouldn't supersede a policy that's in, something that's in policy. So just because, in this case, if 215 wasn't in the board handbook, that doesn't mean that 215 doesn't apply, or 2-whatever doesn't apply. But I do agree, I think you're approving the handbook as a, the board's going to now have a handbook to go to, is what you're approving, because there isn't anything in the handbook necessarily that differs from your policies, no different than the, the board wanted acronyms in a handbook. So we put acronyms in there. We're listing the policies out of convenience, so someone who pulls the handbook up and is a board member can know right away, here are all the policies that directly relate to school board.
I'd like to say, I think it's, it's really important, it's like Lisa interjected earlier, and her discussion is that, you know, when the last three new board members came on, it's like trying to piece together, okay, what is a board member's responsibility, and how do you, it's like opening up a pail of water and trying to pour it down somebody's throat and say, here's all the things that you have to be involved in, responsible for, et cetera. And we need something that gives some guidance. I mean, this is a starting step, and we need it badly to give future board members and current, an understanding of what the responsibilities are of being a school board member in this district.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. So we do have a motion and a second on the table. So with no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Last up is the policies that we moved from the second readings. So we're looking for a motion to approve policies 204, 503, and 710.1.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carries. Last up, just a list of the future meetings, which there are a lot. The district office, we'll be moving our committee meetings back to the district office now that those renovations are completed, and then school board work sessions and regular board meetings will continue to be here with our new setup. So yeah, now we'll start seeing two different locations on there. So just make sure you're checking and be aware of that when you're going to meetings, or if you're a community member who's interested in, in coming to a meeting. Scott?
Do we need to add 1215 as a possible school board work session at this time, or would that be later?
Well, and that would be a, it'd be actually a regular school board meeting.
It would be a regular school board meeting.
It'd be tentative, regular school board meeting, because that would be where we would take, potentially need to take action to accept the budget adjustments.
I think what we've done in the past is we've, the seven of you have put a hold on your calendar for that date, and then next week, you'd have to decide, or not next week, the, by the 8th, you'd have to decide whether you want us to post a, another meeting on the 15th. So I think as board members, put a hold on it, but we won't put it up here yet, so that we're not putting it up and then taking it down.
Okay. Is there anything else tonight? All right. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. You were.
Dave has had too much talking tonight.
I wanted to show up in a minute.
All right. So meeting is adjourned.